To this August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two work session in the Norfolk City Council, I will call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. Roll call, please. Be honest.
Arms.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Branquist. Hildebrand.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. Okay, we are here for the specific purpose of discussion among the city council about a proposed local option sales tax election to fund police facility expansion, street improvements, and recreation projects related to an aquatics facility and Tahazka Park enhancement. So to kick off that discussion, I will ask the city administrator, Andy Colvin, here. I think he'll be back here momentarily, and we'll lead that discussion. And we will work through the different components of this proposal, and then if we have time, allow for some public discussion and comments. But to kick it off and go right into some of these plans, I think, well, Steve or somebody guide me as to what order we want to go into.
Start with PD.
Start with the police. Okay. All right. So we will welcome Police Chief Don Miller to come forward to discuss the proposed police facility renovation and expansion.
Mayor and council, thanks for the opportunity. The PD expansion is a project that's been discussed for quite a while, and I know we have a lot of information to cover. So I'll be relatively brief, and if you have specific questions that you want me to drill down into, I sure will. Our police facility was built in nineteen eighty-seven, and at that time, we had thirty police officers. We had a total of forty-one employees in the building. That includes secretarial staff, community service officers, et cetera. And as I said, that was in nineteen eighty-seven. And then as we come up to twenty twenty, the community has grown, the police department has grown, we've expanded services, we've expanded staff, and we found ourself where we are literally bursting at the seams of our current facility. We, in twenty twenty, we hired a company to do a space needs assessment to get an accurate number as to where we were at, where we were at that point, and where we're going in the future. And I didn't want to just arbitrarily pull a number up and say, yeah, we need to do this. I wanted to have some articulable facts to go along with it. I believe it's in your packets, you've got multiple pictures of the proposed renderings and the proposed budget that we're going to be looking at. But we have gone from a total of forty-one staff in our police building to a current total of sixty-six. So we've had a significant number of increase in staffing. We virtually have not done any construction to our building until last year. And then as that space needs assessment continued in twenty twenty, we had seventeen thousand three hundred square feet in our current building. When we did the space needs assessment, they looked at every aspect of law enforcement, how many officers you have, how many secretaries you have, what are the evidentiary needs that you currently have. And when they looked at that, they figured that our current building, even though it was only seventeen, little over seventeen thousand square feet, should be almost twenty-three thousand square feet. So as of today's standards, we're short. But it doesn't make any sense to construct a building to match your current needs, because I know you've grown it by the following year. So we projected out thirty years. You use the previous thirty years of growth to estimate the future thirty years of growth. And with that, we came up with an estimated twenty-five thousand five hundred and forty-four square feet that we should have in our construction. So the proposed, part of the space needs assessment was also looking at, does it make sense to stay at your current location, to renovate, to add on, or do you start over in a whole new facility, which is more cost-effective? And we did that analysis, and it made sense for us to stay in our current location, which I appreciated, because I like our current location in downtown. It works very well for serving the community. So we went ahead with the idea of the construction. Now, there's multiple phases of this that all tied in together, because we were also looking at expanding our dispatch services, which you know. We've taken over dispatch services for Madison County, and we now have a multi-jurisdictional dispatch facility that dispatches for eighteen agencies in North Madison and county areas. And that's worked very, very well. We've been working in that process, and we just finished the construction of that. We're finishing that as we speak, and we now have that operational in our building. Of course, that took up more space than we were already short, but we wanted to make good decisions on how we utilized our money. And when we were making that design, we incorporated our full additions so that we wouldn't have to come back later on and tear down walls that we just put up. So what you're seeing before you now is the, what we believe is our final plan. There always may be some small changes. But this is to add on to our current facility and then renovate the existing structures to utilize, to suit our needs today and into the future with all of our expansions. And as I mentioned, this is going to be, with the addition, it's right at twenty-six thousand square feet total, and this will serve us well, well into the future, and I believe beyond thirty years, based on what our needs might be at that time. As I mentioned, we went from forty-one employees in our building to sixty-six, and that brings me to the budget piece. That was one of the reasons that we wanted to come here. Our architects that we hired, it's a police facility design group out of Kansas City, they've been designing police buildings and specializing in that for many years. In fact, the predecessor to this company is the one who designed our building originally in nineteen eighty-six. So as we're going through that, you know, they come up with a cost estimate of what it's going to cost to do this addition and renovation. And their current estimate is five point nine million dollars to construct the building. Now, that's the construction costs. That doesn't include desks, tables, shelves, computers, all the things that we're going to needed to do to upgrade that. And there's some company standards that our architect gave me to identify where you're going to, you know, how much do you estimate? Of course, we haven't, we're in the early phases, so we don't have hard bids yet, so this is all estimates. Equipment is usually about two percent of the construction costs. Furnishings are four to six percent. I went with approximately five percent. So as you go through, and the ones that you have there, Lyle, if you want to zoom in on the second half of that.
The second?
Yes, the costs there. What you're seeing is the engineering design and the construction administration costs are the architectural fees to do the blueprints. We are currently in the blueprint stage, and are working on that. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will have already been paid prior to this, to this process. The city has taken the funds to do that. The hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what goes to the architects after construction would start. So from there down are going to be costs that are going to be associated with this project. Administration and engineering reversibles, that's travel time expenses that the architects would have coming back and forth over and above what their, what their contract would be. Materials testing, they have to do soil testing, concrete testing, that type of thing. Again, that's an estimate until we get hard numbers in. Security systems, again, that's an estimate based on what we're going to need, based on past costs. The furnishings and the equipment are general numbers based on the percentages provided by the architects. Other identified, that is just a catch-all, because we know I wanted to put something in there. That could easily go down under the contingencies. But there's always something that you don't plan for. And a project this big, we want to make sure that we've identified those. That's just a placeholder, because as this process goes, we'll get into more specifics. And as we get specific estimates, then we will update this information accordingly. And then commissioning, that is for the heating and air system. Once it's all done, then you have a third-party entity come in. It's a very complicated system, and we want to make sure that it's done right, so we will hire a third-party to come in and verify all of that. Then you have the construction costs. The contingency is fifteen percent. We found in our last project that things are costing a lot more nowadays, so we make our best estimate. But we want to build a contingency so that we don't come in short if we end up not needing it, and that's a great thing, and then we don't need the money. So that brings our total to roughly just over eight million dollars. Again, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that will not be, will already be paid from the engineering design that we're doing right now, prior, prior to this whole process. So the floor plans are included, this budget is included in your pack. I can keep on going, but I want to pause and see if there's any specific questions that you'd like to ask and let that direct future conversations, because you guys have a lot to cover in the next hour.
So you said the planning is developed to go through thirty years from now, based on the growth we've sort of had to last through?
Yes.
So when, you know, ten years from now, you're not going to say, hey, we're too small?
I would hope not. You know, if the community grew, we had this major thing, then we have to reevaluate that. We have been looking at alternative options. For example, in the future, let's say we are thirty years out, and we're starting to fill up the police facility. This is going to be a facility that will handle a lot of capabilities, but if it would happen to outgrow it, we've talked about the option of, the next time we would have to build up a fire station, then we put it, have a satellite station, so to speak, in a fire station, so that we could best utilize our resources down the road. Now, that's thirty years down the road. But that would serve us without having to redo this facility and just look at what are our needs in a satellite station, so to speak, in a, in a fire station. So those conversations have been had, that's very preliminary, but that is a way we could accommodate growth without having to do anything with this building.
And you said we've experienced a lot of loss of officers in the last year?
Last, it's been, the last year to two years has been pretty tough.
And this would help along those lines?
I'd like to think so. When they, when they see the facilities that they have to work in, it has to have a positive effect on, you know, you've seen the pictures, you know, we have offices in the hallways, and if, trying to recruit staff, and they see that we have a functioning, well-designed facility, that has to have a positive effect on the, both retention and recruitment, both.
Any other questions, Chief Miller?
Yeah, I do have one question on the funding part of it. Could you just kind of explain what the three hundred thousand of that police fund is, and where that, how that, where that comes from?
I would refer to, I would have to ask the finance department for that. The funding sources, that's, I'm not real familiar with that piece of it yet.
You're referring to the three hundred seventy-five thousand?
The three hundred under the police fund for, under the funding at the top.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, just in general, I think that's a good question. So obviously, it's a big-ticket item, but you've laid out very reasonable justifications and rationale for why it's needed. If this were, this is something that if it were just left up to the police division budget year to year, there wouldn't be enough to cover the funds needed to build this anytime soon, right?
No. I mean, our budget is an operating budget. There's, there isn't a mechanism in that for, for large purchases. We have the CIP process that we use for some of our current process, or big ticket items now. So yeah, there would be no room in our current budget to put together something like this.
Which is why you see communities who undergo or undertake such projects look at revenue sources like a local option sales tax. In a lot of cases, I think that's been used across the state for facility updates and renovations, for everything from police departments to libraries, like we, like we did here in Norfolk a few years ago, because it does allow for a new revenue stream for these, you know, if you want to say, once-in-a-generation projects, but a project that's not, that doesn't, doesn't happen every few years. I mean, this is, again, like you said, ideally, we don't have to come and come back and look at this for another fifteen, twenty years, depending on growth on the community. But that's, that's why I think this proposal was considered to be part of this local option sales tax initiative. So we could raise that money as needed to get this done now, because as it sounds, you're bursting at the seams.
We are. And as you mentioned, the projection is thirty years? You just, and that's based on the last thirty years. So depending on how fast the community grows, it could shorten that timeframe. But with this facility, I'm comfortable it would last, you know, decades into the future without, without any concerns.
Any other questions?
How deep a discussion do we want to get today? Are we saving some of it for tonight, too? You know, is today more about information, you know, or I don't want to take up a whole lot of time with a bunch of-
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, I think this, I think this work session was originally purposed to make full public presentations of what's, what are these proposals about? Why have they come together? And what are they going to cost? So I think that's, we're trying to cover the basics here, and get that information out transparently to the Okay. Thank you, chief.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I think all, looks like Steve Ramus is approaching the podium. Steve Ramus, our city public works director, to talk about the streets improvements component of this plan.
Mayor and council, I'm going to present a little information on the street component of this bonding initiative. What you have in front of you is a map that represents our intersection three R map. And the next slide here, and you don't need to go there, Lyle, but the next slide will be the, I want to go ahead and we'll go there. And I'll just briefly talk about these. And then I want to have Lyle go to the city website. If this was a live PowerPoint presentation, I would just click on the links below here. But what we're looking program is four million dollars into our intersection repairs, and then another six to eight million dollars into street repairs. On our city website are the full maps. Because the maps are so large, I just took a snapshot of those maps and put them into the PowerPoint presentation here. But this is our city project website. And you can link to this particular page right on the homepage of the city's website. Down here in the middle there, it says, "Street Improvement Plan." Go ahead, click on that, Lyle. He's already done that and brought, brought a couple of these maps up, one of your next tabs there. So this tab represents the planned street improvements. This is our mass, one of our master planning documents as we look at community street needs. The green lines on here represent streets that need concrete pavement repairs, and that would be the priority for, for these funds. Six, again, six to eight million dollars going into concrete street repairs. There would be some milling overlay associated with that. The yellow you see here is milling overlay. We would not necessarily get all of that milled and overlaid as part of the six to eight. But we would intend to hit everything you see there in green on this, on this page and do, we're not doing full repair curb to curb along these segments. These are just showing street segments within the community that we know have some significant street repair needs. The, just to talk about some of the other line work that you see on here, the brown represents existing asphalt streets in the community where there is ongoing annual maintenance through joint seals, fog seals, chip seals, various things like that. We would anticipate with this program hitting everything that is brown with a chip seal project as well. Let's go up, Lyle, if you could. Let's go back and look at the intersections. It's probably your last tab there. This is one of our more recent activities we've done within the engineering department. We've gone out and looked at every intersection in the community, and then come back and identify, does that intersection, is it the center of the intersection that needs repair, or is it the approach that needs repaired? Each intersection generally has four approaches. You can look at this map. What it'll tell you, if you want to zoom in on one of these green areas, you'll see some red components, any, any green dot in there. So some of those green dots, you'll see two red intersections, some you'll see three red intersections, some are showing one red intersection. So that's telling us very quickly what needs to be done there. One intersection, two intersection. Right now, Lyle is circling something that would represent the entire intersection needs to be repaired. So all four approaches, plus the interior of the intersection, would need either some sort of a mill and inlay, full removal and replacement. Again, this is roughly four million dollars across the community. What, one of the things we look at in terms of our condition is our pavement condition index. That's a rating from, from one to a hundred. Right now, our community is generally somewhere in, probably in that fifty-six, fifty-seven range. By doing a project like this, we would bring that up about five percentage points. The reason for that is these intersections are where water tends to collect. It's where salts and sands tend to drop off, and so that sandy, that salty water works its way down into the, into the intersection, gets underneath the pavement or into the pavement, and increases the deterioration. So again, big picture, four million dollars into our intersections, raising our pavement condition, condition index, tying that to as much concrete pavement removal as we can, and then some asphalt, asphalt maintenance as well. Programming ten to twelve, pretty easy for us to scale that up or down, depending on how this, this goes through. In the community yourselves, pretty easy to access this information on the city's webpage. The last two public open houses we've had on this, we've gathered information from the public, and we continue to update these maps with that information.
Questions for Steve? Questions?
Steve, not a, not necessarily a question, more of an observation. It certainly appears as though the majority of the work here would be in wards three and four, which kind of makes sense. I mean, the oldest part of the city that needs the most work.
Correct. You know, it's, you do see it spread a little bit, you know, throughout the various wards, but certainly within the older ward, the older areas of the communities, where you're going to tend to see more maintenance needed.
Okay.
What, Steve, what's the total value of this? What's the overall?
Of the intersections?
Six million, but like the total, total.
Total project. Right, right now, I'm planning, I'm planning for ten to twelve.
I did have one question back on that street map. You did have a concrete repair, and you also had milling overlay. What does it mean when you have a street that has both yellow and green on it?
Yellow and green, that would be, within our planning, we're looking to do concrete repair followed by a milling overlay. They may not be right, right together in terms of timing, but eventually, the plan would be to do concrete repair and then milling overlay.
Okay. It does bring up a question of timing. What, what do you say there?
We would expect to, over two years, probably have all ten to twelve million dollars under contract. There probably would be two to three, maybe four different contracts, depending on how, what makes the most sense. But the intent would be to get that in the ground within three years.
And is there a cost savings by contracting this with, say, a ten to twelve million dollar budget as opposed to smaller increments?
Certainly there is. One of the things we pay on every contract is mobilization. And so if we can get them to mob in, basically to the community once, versus mobbing over, say, a ten-year period on ten or twelve different contracts, yeah, we're going to save that mob cost. So you save that cost, plus you just, you have, generally, you see a lower cost per unit. So the square yard cost for the concrete repair, or the tonnage cost, if you're talking asphalt, you'll see a lower, a lower number on that. Off the top of my head, I'd say, by doing this in a three-year period in large contracts, that's probably a five to ten percent more going into actual project. The other thing is, I would say, ninety-five percent of this would probably be done through the city engineer's office. Pretty, pretty straightforward in terms of the concrete repair, milling overlay type work. So we wouldn't be, per se, going out for consultants on the majority of this.
Glad you brought that up. That's going to be my next question.
Steve, I saw an interesting number in the last week. Last week, we had a public open, public open house on all these different projects, including the streets plan. And I think you talked to the media. From the, from the story in that report, it was referenced that historically, the city of Norfolk has spent two million dollars less per year in annual maintenance and repair than other cities our size. And that was, that was striking to me, and it started to make sense as to how I see some of the conditions of our streets. I know we've had to do a lot of work in the last four or five years to reform construction and standard- and standard processes. And I could tell from Steve's presentation that the scoring of this work and the prioritization of projects is not left to guesswork. This is, you've brought on a systematic review and analysis of our infrastructure throughout the city. But that's a big, that's a big gap, $2 million, which is, again, another reason I think we're looking at this local sales tax initiative to try to catch up and to try to get back to some of that systemic, regularized maintenance and repair that we should have been doing over the last few decades. Is that fair?
That's a fair statement. Because we've probably been a little short there, can, big picture, our entire system's worth about $450 million if you were to replace it all today, one shot. If we can get our streets to last 100 years, that means you're replacing 1% of that system every year, which would be about 400 or 4.5 million dollars just in heavy street replacement projects. You throw in our mill and overlays and concrete repairs, chip seals, maintenance, you know, we should be investing in that $6 million a year into our system. Right now, through city highway allocation funds, vehicle licensing fees, we capture about $4 million a year.
And because we've taken on large reconstruction projects like Brash and Benjamin that were delayed and delayed throughout the years, we've had to, we've had to utilize more of that, which makes less money available for annual maintenance.
If we're capturing $4 million now, and you're talking to that 20-year bond we just, the $20 million bond we just did, and I believe the payment on that's about 1.4. So that's coming out of that 3.7 from CHAP. How do you get back to that with this? Because I'm looking at the annual, on the 12, the annual, if you went out and bonded the 12, that's probably about an $800,000, eight and a half, eight, maybe around $900,000 payment? So how do you get to where you can substantially?
Those are conversations that I think as we go forward, we need to have about how do we get there? You know, and not to go too deep there, but right now, we're, because we have shortened ourselves over time compared to other communities, we're further down the deterioration curve. And I think as a community, we can all see that as we look around at our transportation system. So it's going to take us a little bit, we're going to invest to get that deterior, out of that deterioration curve and get back up to where just through regular maintenance, we can maintain our system for, and get those streets to last out there for 60, 80, 100 years. But there's, it doesn't take much to look around and see that we have a lot of deterioration.
Well, I guess it's just like Josh was, what he was leading to, I'm looking at these numbers and with, there's no feasible way to do any of this without trying to do something like a, or?
Correct. This is a significant, you know, this would be a significant input into our system.
You still, we'll still be behind.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Steve. Next up, here's the aquatics facility. We'll hear next from Nate Powell, our City Parks and Rec Director.
Mayor and Council, is this on? Okay, there we go. We have two projects that I was going to talk about today. The first one being the Taizuka Park Master Plan. And that's what this is, a full master plan of the park. It includes all the ball fields, some new ball fields, and some improvements over in the campground area and park. Okay. When, because of Taizuka, we phased it out in three phases here. I call it the ball field improvement phase, where we're going to improve all of our existing fields. We want to add, you know, locker rooms for umpires and all the athletes, both male and female. We want to add parking and roadway. We want to create a safer parking situation and a safer roadway so kids don't have to cross the road as they go into the, into the ball fields. And also adding two softball fields in north. Phase two would be the park improvements. This is adding a baseball field to where the current horseshoe pits are. There'd be expanded campground opportunities and also a sports court where the current field four would be. And that would be pickleball, basketball, tennis, those kinds of court activities. Phase three would be the soccer complex improvements. This would be four new soccer fields, two of them with artificial turf, and also two footsaw fields, which is a small mini soccer court. So the public input process, we received a lot of input. We incorporated these into the design work. Wow, if you can just hit through these, hit through them all, that'd be real good. Safer roadway with access to First Street is what we heard. We want to improve parking, improve our existing ball fields, add new fields with the proper sizing for tournaments. We want to improve our backstops, dug out some bullpens, and improve spectator areas with ADA access and shade. Add, you know, comfort stations for the umpires and the men's and women's locker rooms has been an issue out there. We want properly sized ball fields to host more tournaments, as I mentioned, and improve the playing surface and level our current ball fields. So we have a lot of deferred maintenance that we're working with. The second project is the indoor aquatic center. And we had two locations on parkland that were considered here. The first being Embrace Park. We did have problems with the LWCF grant that was used to develop that park. That would be a long process with an unknown at the end. And so we thought it'd probably not be a good idea to move forward. We also had space limitations with only, we need, we need eight to 10 acres for our facility and for all the parking available, and that site just wasn't going to cut it for us. So, wow, the next one, the second one is Winter Park, and that's, that's got the 10 acres that we needed. It's across from the high school and library. Makes for a great location for it. So that's where we're proposing, you know, in our proposal. Go ahead, Lyle. So we're proposing a 54,000 square foot facility. It's at the $32 million budget. This would have a competition pool with spectator seating for 600, and also a rec pool with a lazy river or current channel with several play features for water-based recreation. And we also went through a public input process here. We heard that people want a year-round facility in our community. They want a destination pool with that regional draw. That's what we're presenting. So it'd be a large competition pool with enough seating for, to bring in those local and state swim meets, and a recreation pool that's maximizing that square footage that's available to us. The facility would also allow us, for the YMCA to continue their programs. That's been an important part of the public input that we've heard. We want to make sure we continue that partnership with the YMCA. Improve parking and bike lanes along North Third Street is something we heard about the Winter Park location, and also keeping that playground on the north area of Winter Park. We also have a new playground going in, in just, in Warren Cook, just to the south. So there'll be plenty of playgrounds in the area. And also to replace those tennis courts and move those up to the Liberty Bell is where we plan to do that. Expected revenue, I'm just giving you some background of AquaVenture. 40,000 visits a year over two and a half months. We've had as high as 65,000 visits. At 265,000 revenue, that's $6.63 per visit. That doesn't include concessions, so you can probably get to about 750 per visit if you add the concessions in there. Next slide, Lyle. So a new indoor pool projection with 100 visits, just the average per visit would be based on where you set your fees and where they fall. And that would, that would kind of change it, what that level would be. So at an average of $10 per visit, you're bringing in a million dollars' worth of revenue for the facility. This is the public process that we went to. We started in January 18th with Davis Design. It was approved by council on, at council meeting on January 18th. We worked with some steer, with our steering committee, individual sports. We had all the baseball, softball, soccer groups, football. We brought everybody in to get their input on this process and what they wanted to see. We've also met with the subcommittee and a city council work session on June 21st, all the way up until today. So you can see, we've gone through an extensive public engagement process to really hear what the public had to say and what they want in these facilities. And that's what we're presenting here today. I think that's it. You can go to the agenda if you would like, Lyle.
Questions for Nate?
I'll go ahead and open up for questions.
You said that the facility, this indoor swimming facility will hold 600 spectators?
Yes.
And so that, I'm not sure how many, but right now, I don't think we can even hold a swim meet. Dave, are you here?
I'm here.
How many, how many teams can you put in where you are now? If you hold a meet? Come on up.
Okay.
How many teams can you host right now?
Yeah. With the facility you have?
For a high school meet, two meets?
Let's, Gary, let's let him get to the podium. We need to have everybody who speaks come up to the podium.
I didn't know I'd be coming up here, but.
They're here. You look good, I want you up.
Thanks. Dave Nelson. Looks like someone wrote it for me, so I'm good there. How many teams could you, in our present facility? I would say three is probably the safe bet if you're looking at a high school. I mean, if you're looking at a little kid meet, we can put more in. We have to use, we utilize the gyms at the Y House for space.
For swimming?
For swimming, yep.
Now, when they, how many, did they get a good following?
A good following at our swim meets? Yeah. I believe we run a pretty good swim meet. We have a good organizational parent group that can do a lot of good things.
So in this kind of facility, how many teams could you get? Compared, but this is like Carney-Hastings type?
We'd be able to get more than Hastings, Carney, all of those above. You'd be able to get probably 20 teams in there.
And that would be a weekend meet?
Yes.
So they would be staying in town?
Correct. You could host major invites in a facility of this size and bring a lot of people to town. I can tell you, the Omaha and Lincoln coaches already have been talking to me about, let me know if this facility is built, we're coming.
Question. So just like we talked about with Chief Miller about how facility improvements help with recruitment and retention, what does a facility like this do for youth swim programs? I mean, I have to imagine that having a state-of-the-art facility like this helps recruit more swimmers in the community?
I would agree 100%. You could build up more programs, you could build up, you could have so many more opportunities with kids to be, with the time and the space is huge. Extremely thankful for the YMCA in our facility, but we are one of the few communities in a town this size that has one indoor pool. So having another set of indoor water, I believe, would increase our numbers. Our numbers are at capacity. We have to turn people away in November. We just don't have the space.
It's impressive to me to have watched how the Norfolk swimming program has succeeded in spite of having that, those space limitations. So that's a testament to the work you've done.
Well, thank you, and it's a testament to the Y working with us to give us the best space possible.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Well, I have one question. You know, you're talking about maybe possibly 20 teams. This facility, I think, is talking about 600 people possibly as spectators. Is that, is that size probably adequate for?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Bigger, smaller?
There are only, there are only two facilities, I believe, in the state of Nebraska, indoor facilities that can seat that amount. That's the University of Nebraska-Davany can seat 1,200. So the state high school meet would not be able to compete. Davany would be able to, would be able to hold more people. And then the other facility, the University of Nebraska Omaha, I believe, seats 700. All other indoor facilities seat around 400 or less. So the state age group championships in the winter, this facility could host. And also the state YMCA, state championships, this facility could host. This is for indoor meets. Outdoor meets are long course, the way the swimming world works, we work 50-meter pools when it comes to the summer. So this facility wouldn't be able to meet that need, but it would be able to meet a lot of needs for winter competitive swimming in the state of Nebraska.
Thank you.
I think you're off the hook. Thank you.
Nate, one of the concerns, I don't know if we're going to get into this today or not, but one of the concerns that I've had people talk to me about is more, not so much the project itself, but the operating costs after the project is running, you know, because they're worried about how we're going to, how that'll be paid and on what budget, so.
Yep. I recently went through this process in 2018, building a new indoor aquatic center, going through a whole business plan process. And so I'm a little bit familiar with, with what to expect here. I think you can expect 800 to a million dollars in operating costs. Five, 600 of that's going to go into your staffing of lifeguards and part-time staff. We're working from the bottom up. We don't need to hire a second director just because we're adding, you know, doubling the size of the department, you don't need another director, you don't need another aquatic supervisor. But we do need more lifeguards. We will need probably one head lifeguard, which would be one full-time position for the facility. So that'd be probably, you can expect probably a million dollar operating cost. I also showed how you can, you can recoup that in revenue with a million dollars' worth of revenue, depending on where you fall in on the, on the pricing, what you're going to, what you're going to charge. The lower you charge, the more people in the community get to use the facility. Maybe you have scholarships and different programs for that as well. But that's where you, you look at, you look at that through the business planning of the facility. Does that help?
Yeah, just trying to, what the operating cost would be. So you said there's potential to pay that fee, or pay that, come up with that million dollar each year?
In revenue?
Yeah.
That's correct.
You think you'll get enough in revenue to cover? You think it'd be somewhat close?
I can't say, you know, with AquaVenture going anywhere from 40 to 65, you know, in a year-round facility, it's going to be real busy, especially you've got all those meets coming in. People are coming in by using concessions and using the facility. You know, I think that we can hit 100,000, but I can't, I can't say definitively without going through a full, you know, business plan process, which would be costly. If you, if you can hit that 100,000 mark, I think you can recoup all your costs.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
One concern I've had, Nate, when you look at having an indoor park and an outdoor park in the summer, are you going to operate the indoor park? And will they, will they butt heads and you're doubling your facilities and cutting your tennis and how?
That's correct. Well, during, when we opened one in Mitchell, we have, we had an outdoor pool at the time as well. There was no impact on the outdoor pool at all. We also kept the fees separate and, again, no, no impact on the two, because you have two different clientele that want to go outside and get some sun versus those that don't. And there are people in the community that need indoor pools that just don't, don't want to be out in the sun. So it is slower in the summertime at the indoor pool, but in the winter, it's real busy. And that's what you can expect.
That's kind of what makes that a destination facility is with being an indoor pool in the wintertime. It gives people in the town something to do, and it brings people from out of town to give them something to do.
I think that's a good point in terms of, you know, the sustainability question you asked about operations. A new wrinkle we're seeing are Parks and Rec Department with bringing Nate on and his expertise as business management. You've done this in other places. You've crunched the numbers to determine what works and what doesn't. And I think it's worth noting that Norfolk has one of, if not the highest, retail pull factor in the state of Nebraska. And that means we pull in a lot of people from a regional basis to support both our small business community, our retail pull factor. small business community, our retail and services community, and now I think something like this because this would be a facility that, that doesn't exist anywhere close. Is that right, Nate?
That's correct. Sioux Falls, I think, has Midco would be your, your equivalent. That'd be the closest one that I'm aware of.
Right.
Nate, for the indoor rec center or rec field?
Yep.
Do you have a capacity on that?
I don't think.
Swimmers or?
Did we do capacity at all?
I don't remember what our employees told me. Was that a couple hundred, 250, 300? I don't remember.
I don't have that for you Andrew today, yep.
The space just looks pretty tight. I mean, for parents who are there watching, if you look at the pictures, the tables are right next to the pool, so there may have to be some tweaking there.
Yeah, exactly. In final design, you would be looking at some of those details.
Right.
Yep.
We tried to maximize the water.
Right. We had talked before, but yeah. Cool. Okay. Thank you.
Maybe a good reminder that these, these are early design concepts.
Yep.
They are, they are not set in stone. Their purpose to give us an idea of what this could be. But as there is with all of the, with large projects like this, there's always refining period and the plans can be adjusted and amended as needed. Any other questions for Nate while he's up here? I did want to make one point. And Andy Colvin, our city administrator, if you want to weigh in on this. A lot of these plans, these rec plans were not pulled out of thin air. These are city administration reacting to and responding to needs that have been expressed throughout the community going back years. And there was a community survey that was done in 2018, I believe, that showed that the people, one of, one of the priorities is we need more for youth to do, more activities for youth to do during winter months. I don't know, Andy, if you want to expand on that and how that relates to what has coincided in these proposals here today.
Sure. Well, the survey you're referring to is a, the result of that is a livability report. And so it was a, a sample of the community was drawn in 2017, 18 to really look at the, well, livability of the community and see what people's thoughts are. One of the questions that was unique that we, we did put at the end of that survey, and you can interpret it any, any number of ways, I guess, but basically listed a number of projects that you'd find in a, in a community of Norfolk's size. Amenities, buildings, facilities. And citizens who took the survey and chose, chose to answer the question, again, that's one where you don't, you didn't have to answer the question or wasn't required. But of those that did, you had a number of projects that ranked pretty high. Indoor community center with rooms for parties, events, and things like that is one, which we've kind of glossed over that, but the proposed aquatic center does have rooms for rent if you did want to use those for a party or just a meeting. Doesn't have to be even related to aquatics at all, but they'd be open for the public to use. The second one was children's museum, and then you had a aquatic center. Those all ranked close to that 50% mark of interest. The city's not really in a museum business. That's not something that we really do. A lot of places you don't see cities, at least in my experience, of our size do museums. I think that's a good project, but it's probably something we could partner in the community to have. So turning to the other high one was an indoor aquatic center. And I, and the questions following those questions was asking those that took the survey, would you support a tax increase to pay for these proposed projects? You had, it was overall about a 60-40 split, which is normally what you would see in a, probably in any, any kind of a vote in most communities. But the 60%, there was about 25% of those or so that was yes, definitely yes. The rest of them were maybe, maybe, maybe vote for it, which I think would tell you for the right projects, you know, generally, yeah, they would support a project like this with a sales tax increase. So again, these are things you see. I think the goal was just to offer these to the, to the community if this is something we want to do, we as a community want to do. If we want to do them, we have a mechanism in the state of Nebraska to pay for that. That is a voter-approved mechanism. And that's there for a good reason because it is, it is a sales tax increase. And I think that's a, that's a big component of this that we all need to remember, that we're really putting this into the hands of the community. And I think these projects are, again, ones you see in a lot of communities. This is nothing unusual that we're doing. So, but to answer your question, Mayor, the, the livability report did provide some guidance, I think, to us as we're trying to put together, you know, where, where are we going? What do we want to do and what do we want to see Norfolk be in 10, 20, 30 years?
Okay. Thank you, Andy, for that background context. Any other discussion amongst council? Questions for any of the department heads on the plans? We do have a few minutes left. I don't want to go much past one, but we had a good turnout here today. Again, there'll be another opportunity for learning more about these proposals tonight as the council considers whether to move this forward to a public vote in November. I would, with the time remaining, if anyone here has a burning desire to really say something, allow for that opportunity. Again, with the caveat that we want to be respectful of people's time and not go much Afternoon.
Hello. My name is Sharon Hartorn, and I have three hats. So the first hat is a grandma hat, and I would love to have an indoor facility for my kids to come home and bring their kids to play. A lot of people from here travel all the way to Kansas City. I know someone mentioned Sioux Falls. I've actually never heard of anyone from here going to Sioux Falls for the water park part. We go there for swim meets, mostly college competitions, but never for, just to go play. And so most people from here pay for a hotel in Kansas City, go out to eat, to go to an indoor water facility to play with their kids. The other one is just, I love to swim laps. And the Y is a great facility and they do a great job, but they also run great programs that a lot of people want to do aquaside and I don't even know what they're all called, all the aquapasses. But they have a great turnout and a lot of people that can't do other sport, other activities or choose not to are involved in these activities. And so that leaves very little space for swimming laps. And like Dave said, they do a great job also giving us space with the high school team and the AquaJet team. And so that leaves very little space for the community to come in and swim laps. At certain times of the day, it's especially busy between five and six and between seven and 10 a.m. From 10 to 12 or 10 to 1, it's very available. In the afternoon, it's, it's pretty available as well, depending on if there's kids there swimming. But there's just limited space for actually swimming laps. And but again, because so many people are using the facility, it's a great facility. But the other one is, of course, as a coach as well, we do have a lot of kids, eight to 10, sometimes 12 kids, sometimes even a few more per lane, which makes it challenging as a coach to coach effectively. And we do end up saying no to some kids that sometimes then choose other sports, which it's great that they're available. We do miss some kids because we don't have the space to provide for them because we just can't have more swimmers in the poolage time. But again, we, the Y's done a great job, given us space. We've produced a really competitive high school swim team and AquaJet swim team. But I do know we could host a lot more invites if we had more facility, which would bring a lot of people to community, bring revenue to the community, lodging, eating out. And so I'm really excited that you're putting this on the proposal and I hope it passes. Thank you.
Thank you for that input.
Sharon, did you sign in? Did you sign in? I don't need that.
And I would ask, I'm going to volunteer some people to speak if they wish. You referenced the economic impacts. I am aware that MPPD did an analysis of local economic impacts of such projects.
Happy birthday.
Looks like you have somebody in front of you, so.
Jim McKenzie. Just a couple notes. Approving the 70 million dollar ballot issue will put the city in dire financial position. It'll saddle the taxpayers with a maximum sales tax rate allowed by law for 20 years. That's almost an entire generations of, generation of citizens that will pay for this. Any other projects that come up after this for the next 20 years will require a property tax increase or an additional tax. No question. The city's out of spending bullets. That's an important consideration. The city just officially released the cost of this, what they're considering on this project to the public two working days before the meeting what they're going to vote on it, if you're going to vote on it tonight. I believe that's an injustice to the taxpayers. They deserved an opportunity to have long-lasting input into this, including the cost. The citizens aren't going to show up for open houses when, if it's not something that they're specifically interested, until they know the cost and what they're going to have to pay for it. There should have been a six to 12-month feedback cycle between the council with the cost announced and the citizens so that they can look at the project and try and massage it into something that's workable versus a, this is everything, take it all, we're going to spend it all. I don't believe there's really been a mandate from the public demanding this level of recreation spending. If you look at that survey, a tiny fraction of the citizens of the community filled that out. I'm going to say less than 2%. And we don't even know if those are citizens of Norfolk. There's nothing in that survey that required them to be citizens. Anybody online could fill that out. And if only 40% wanted the water park, that's less than 1% of the population. And I appreciate the passion of the people who are here and want that. I understand that, but there's a significant portion of the population that's going to have to pay for this that maybe can't afford it. The taxpayers have limits to the amount that they're willing to spend. They have limits to what they can afford to spend. The city portion, just the city portion of my property taxes have increased 115% over the past eight years at a rate that's almost double or triple the county, college, and schools. If the schools felt that there is a significant need for this and they're the main users of the competition pool, would they not have built that themselves? Or are they deciding that maybe there's just not enough need that they couldn't justify that cost? And why is the city taking that on? Lastly, how do you tell those living on a fixed income or at the poverty level, in addition to paying ever-increasing property taxes on their home, it's the same home that they've lived in for the last eight years, but now they're paying double what they used to pay, that they have to now pay for an indoor aquatic center or between 18 and 32 million dollars with Tahazuka improvements? How do you tell them that they can have to continually shell that out? They're going to pay that tax on their electric bill, their gas bill, and their utility bills are going to skyrocket this winter. How do you continue to say, we're going to pay for everything? There's got to be some limits here. There's got to be some controls. I understand the passion of the people that want it. I understand that 100%, but we are putting the city in a position, it's going to be hard to crawl out of. You maximize your sales tax for 20 years and you're out of bullets and you want to do a lot of other things, you have no other way to do it other than additional property tax increases. I just ask you to consider that. If you're going to put this on the ballot, the last thing I'll say is divide these projects up. If the citizens truly want them, put them on the ballots individually so citizens can choose what they're willing to support and what they're not willing to support. Don't hold certain projects hostage for the other projects. Thank you.
Okay.
Jim, I would have to say if you, if you have a problem with the city property tax, you might want to take that up with the, with the assessor because it's not the city that did that.
I will disagree with that because other entities, entities have actually reduced their levy when the valuations went up. The city did not. The city actually increased their levy.
The city's levy has increased less than 1% over the last five years.
But you assumed and accumulated every bit of the valuation increase rather than reducing your levy. The city actually got 115% more on my house in the last eight years than they got eight years ago. The schools and the colleges are not increasing at that rate.
Once again, I would check with the assessor. And as far as who's going to pay for this?
All you have to do is pull out your sales tax, excuse me, your property tax statements and look at them.
As far as who's going to pay for this, this is, as we stated many, many times, this is a vote of the public. If the public decides they would like to have it, that's the way it's going to be if we put it on the ballot.
I agree with that. And I would say separate those. Let the citizens choose.
I understand you, that's your opinion. But what we're going to ask ourselves this evening at the council meeting is whether we want to put, call it the whole banana if you want, on the ballot and the citizens will decide that. It's not a city-driven issue. It's a citizen-driven issue and you may not like it. And there's lots of votes I've taken in my life that didn't go the way I wanted them to, but that is the way it works.
From my perspective, and I'll give you my opinion, there's a huge need for the police improvements. That's been a need in the community for a long time. That's a need, not a want. And let the citizens decide what they think is a need and a want and let them make that choice.
Yeah, I think that's the point here. Thank you, Jim. We want to get to others wishing to express their opinions on us. And Jim, I will say, I respect and admire your years of service to the city as a former city employee. I know we've had good conversations in the past about the growth that's happening in Norfolk and how that's a positive thing. Just briefly, I take, I take a lot of issues with what you've said. Just facts, though. The city of Norfolk does maintain the third lowest property tax levy in the, in the state of Nebraska among cities. The local optioned sales tax is a revenue generation source that is used by many cities across the state. In fact, if you look at, for us cities, there's several right now that are utilizing this to pay for special projects that enhance quality of life. And the city of Norfolk, I think there's an implication made that we are somehow in a poor fiscal position, which is exactly opposite of the truth. If you look at the, our proposed budget, which the council will consider in the next few weeks, we are actually in the strongest fiscal position that the city of Norfolk has ever been. And I, I think part of that has to do with the fact that we've been willing to invest in ourselves. I hear a lot about how government should act more like business. Businesses have to invest in themselves to grow, and I think these projects fall in line with that narrative. Thank you. And now we have MPPD here to talk about economic.
I will have to say one thing, Mayor. I have a, an appointment that I'm going to have to get to, so unfortunately, I'm going to miss your comments, but we're, this is public record, so I'll be able to go back and take a look at them.
Okay.
But I want to thank everybody that's here today for, for coming to the work session. Council, I think, asked a lot of great questions and very much look forward to this evening's meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Nicole Sedlachek. I'm Economic Development Manager for Nebraska Public Power District. Our team received a request. I know I've, I've been in front of the council previously with an impact assessment, but we just last week completed an impact assessment as to what the proposed improvements to the park, part of the project could do for the, the city of Norfolk. So our research team is led by Dr. Melissa Trueblood. She's a PhD economist who analyzed the data and put the report together using an in-plan database that consists of different economic and demographic variables for hundreds of different industrial sectors and, and more than 3,000 counties in the United States. And so this specifically looked at the aquatic center and ballpark complex portions of the project. And what we looked at, we received numbers from past tournaments, visitor numbers, team numbers that had been here in the community already. We received those numbers from the Norfolk Area Visitors Bureau. We, we run those numbers. Dr. Trueblood runs those numbers. And we just looked at the, the pool and the, the park project portion of it. So the campground portion of Tahazuka, that is not taken into any account, any of this economic impact. But we do know from the campground perspective of Tahazuka is that it's often always full and that there are more camp spots needed within the community. But just looking at the, the pool and the, the park portion of the project, on an annual basis, it would bring in 4.7 million dollars in total visitor spending, create up to an additional 107 jobs, an additional 12 million dollar economic impact, again, from that visitor spending. Over 30,000 visitors and spectators. Over 30,000 visitors and spectators that would come to the community with, with this type of project. Again, this was taking data from the Norfolk Area Visitors Bureau, also looking at the Sports Tourism Index. That's kind of a national index that's utilized to look at large events and sporting competitions. And the data was also received from the Aqua Jets League and some of their swimming teams, events, and numbers. And so you have this report. Again, just wanted to make sure that, that you are aware of what that economic impact would look like with these proposed improvements. Any questions on the data as, as it's presented?
Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate that analysis. So again, to rehash those numbers, almost $5 million in total visitor spending. And I see a figure, $12 million economic impact from visitor spending. Can you talk about the distinction between those two?
Yes. So it, it's secondary effects. So the direct effects include, like, changes in, you know, sales. But secondary effects include the impacts of local businesses to business purchases and supply chain of establishments selling goods and services directly to visitors. So it's, it's, again, the total of the direct and secondary. So secondary can include, like, changes in local spending by workers at businesses selling directly to the visitors and at firms and their supply chains due to changes in their incomes that are coming in due to that projected visitor spending.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, so this was a work session. The council intended to present these proposals and their projected costs, which was intended to happen last week, but didn't. I wanted to clarify one number that Nate, I think you showed on the board. As far as input sessions that started back in January, there's been, it looked to me more than half dozen public input sessions of the public stakeholders, shareholders. Is that accurate?
So we had, we had 12 different meetings for different stakeholders, steering committees, subcommittees, council, and public open house as well. So we had a dozen of them, yeah.
Okay. All right. And again, as a reminder, the council will be taking up this issue tonight, and there will be an opportunity to weigh in and give input on that. So anyone, if any, everyone wishes to come forward. I'm going to limit it to a couple people just so we can end, end this work session now in a timely manner. But there will be, for anyone else, an opportunity to speak tonight to the issue.
Hello, Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. I just wanted to...
Ma'am, can I get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Olivia Mateo. I just wanted to make sure that you understand that some of the citizens of this city are not aware about all the stuff that's going on right now. The first one that I've heard about this was the, the one in the library, I believe. And they didn't have all the numbers. The working sessions that you're doing, or at least this session, my impression was to get citizens' opinions and, you know... The, the survey was not enough, a big enough thing to take the majority of the citizens in this city. I agree that there's a lot of business that could be had with all these different amenities. However, I believe that, as Mr. Jim said, I do agree with him. If this is truly, as Rob Merrill said, a citizen-driven issue, that you guys should consider, consider, I'm not saying you should, you should consider that maybe breaking it up into four different bonds or at least take the recreation, a separate bond, and the safety and public roads, because that is part of safety. Keep it separate so that the citizens of this, of the Norfolk can figure out, do they want the safety and their roads fixed? Or do they want the recreation before the safety? Or can they afford the whole thing? I mean, I think it's two different things. And with all the projects that's going on right now in Norfolk, I know there's a lot of money given, donations to some of the projects around the city, but I just, I'm not very convinced that there's not a lot of problems coming up if we do all four at once. So with the inflation cost, the grocery bills going up, the electricity growing, you know, going up, we should consider the two different areas, you know, in order to make sure that we don't kill our citizens. And the ones that we're actually trying to put this out to are the ones that may or may not be able to afford to go to the recreation portion of it. So, and then we're having problems with people getting jobs or going to jobs. So I just want to make sure that, you know, if we do build all this stuff, are they going to be closed half the time because there's nobody working in there? I mean, or the capacity overload or however the capacity is? And if we do all the swim meets and invite everybody here, are our roads going to be able to handle all the traffic? I can't, when I have something done to my house and I need a, you know, one night stay, I can't even stay in a hotel, because they said, I'm, I live in the city, so they're not even going to consider me going into a hotel. I have to go to Columbus. And nobody would let, let me rent a hotel room for one night. So I mean, I, I don't understand some of the rules, you know, that we have here. So building all these things, the swimsuits and all this stuff, creates a lot more issues with the roads, the public safety, you know, capacity and everything else that goes on. So I do agree with Mr. Jim that if this is a citizen-driven thing, we do need to figure out which ones go together. And I recently heard that there's something that we need to do with our levies too. So I'm very concerned about that, because flood insurance, if we don't get that approved by FEMA, there's another insurance that's going to go up along with the property tax. So I'm, I'm a retired military person. I, I do not have a big, you know, income. So the rate of all these things going up, it's just, I can't even afford to go to YMCA, because it's just, you know, too much. So I just want to make sure I do, you know, I like the ideas that you have, but please put it out to citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, Council, my name is Rob Hake. I appreciate you guys taking the time. I'll keep this brief. I wear a number of hats as well. Some of those are my kids, they swim. But I also wear the hat of a business owner in town who runs a door manufacturing company. So we, we're a manufacturer. This is a manufacturing town. We have a lot of, a lot of companies that require people, fantastic people, to, to be on the team to do great things and to grow. About two months ago, I was down in Columbus for the Manufacturing Expo, and the number one concern that every business owner has is access to the workforce, to labor. The matter of the fact is, we are competing with other cities to have people that choose Norfolk as a place to live. So I want to applaud the vision here. Investing is what it is. Investing in parks and pools. This is, this is what families look at when they choose which city to live in, in addition to which jobs are available, and they kind of go together. So I think there are a lot of companies like me that want to hire more people. We need more people. Let's bring the people here. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. Again, a reminder, this is a work session to present these ideas and proposals. The official resolution, to put it on the ballot, will be discussed tonight. There will be opportunity for public input at that time. So I would encourage anyone who wishes to speak any further than this to attend the city council meeting starting at 5:30 right here later today. We appreciate your participation here and your attendance. But with that, I think we will adjourn this work session and hopefully see you tonight. Thank you.